Laura, correct.
Right, correct.
Just a lot of time.
She's at her trade school conference.
All right, we're good.
Okay, let's go and get started with the invocation given by Pastor Alex Bromley of the Refinery Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this amazing opportunity, Lord, to gather. God, I thank you for these elected officials, God. I pray that you give us wisdom. May our conversation tonight be fruitful and just to give you glory and honor, Lord. We thank you for this great city of Kingsburg. May we steward it well, Lord. And so we love you. We thank you. We give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I point allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It's the regular City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 1st. Madam Clerk, can we get our roll call, please?
Councilmember Silva.
Present.
Councilmember Colomber.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Prusell Jr.
Here.
And Councilmember North is excused tonight.
Thank you. Okay, item two is agenda approval. Can I get a motion for that?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, we, under presentations, we have none, so we will move to item four, our public comments. This is the time for any citizen to come forward and address the City Council on any issue within jurisdiction that is not listed on the agenda. A maximum of five minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Do we have any members of the public that would like to come forward and address the council?
Are you guys looking at me?
So seeing none, seeing none, we will move to item five, the consent calendar. These items are considered routine in nature and are to be placed on the consent calendar. They will be considered as one item and voted upon in one vote unless individual consideration is requested. Each vote in favor of the consent calendar is considered and recorded as a separate affirmative vote in favor of each action item listed. Approval of the consent calendar items include recitals, readings, ordinances by titles only, and adoptions of recommended actions contained in staff reports. For today's consent calendar, we have items 5.1 through 5.7, which is listed in the agenda if anyone would like to look at them. Do we have any members from council that would like to pull a consent item?
No.
No.
Do we have any members of staff that would like to pull an item? Is there any members from the public that would like to pull any of the consent items? If not, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor of adopting the consent calendar?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Motion carries. We'll move on to our regular calendar. Item 6.1, the financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2023. As prepared by Price Paging Company, staff report by Finance Director Alma Colado.
Mayor Prusell and City Council. The city of Kingsburg financial statement for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023 have been added by an independent accounting firm. An unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion, has been issued. Anthony Gonzalez from Price Paging Company will be presenting our financials tonight, and he has a presentation in the package. Avi?
Good evening, honorable members of council. My name is Anthony Gonzalez, and tonight I am here to present to you the results of the audit. So we've got a presentation here. That'd be perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to present the results of the financial statement audit, as well as the single audit. Okay, agenda for tonight's presentation. I'll try to move as quickly as possible, keep everyone awake. I'm going to talk a little bit about who we are as an accounting firm, and talk about the scope of the audit for this year's engagement. Talk a little bit about what the audit process is, some of the areas that we emphasized in this year's audit, and then, of course, go over the auditors' reports and required communications. I do have questions here listed at the end, but if you have questions at any time, please feel free to interrupt. Okay, so Price Paging Company is a full-service accounting firm. We were founded in 1976, over 45 years ago. We are a top-10 firm specializing in serving governments. We have over 80 audits of municipalities, special districts, counties, and nonprofit organizations. And right now, we're about 52 employees, including about 15 CPAs. This year's engagement management team included Fausto Hinaosa, who is our managing partner, and he also signed the reports. Myself, I serve as the engagement supervisor. And we had two additional professional staff members that assisted us with our procedures, and as well as our administrative support team that kind of assists with our quality control for the financial statements. Okay, so combined, we have over 50 years of providing audit and attest services to government entities. Okay, the scope of this year's audit included the audit of the annual financial statements, and this was performed in accordance with the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, as well as government audit standards. This is an additional layer of auditing that's specific to governments, as you could imagine. Also, because the city expended more than 750,000 of federal awards during the year, we were required to audit the city's compliance with those federal awards, and this is what's called the single audit. Okay, these standards require that we perform a risk-based audit, which is designed to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. So essentially, that's saying that it's not absolute assurance, meaning we would have to test every single transaction. And material misstatement would indicate something that is large or could change the user's opinion of the activity. Okay, so the example I like to give is if I told you I had $100 in my bank account, but I really had 99, probably wouldn't matter too much, but if I told you I had a million and I only had 100, that may change your opinion a little bit. Okay, so the audit process starts with us gaining an understanding of the city's fiscal operations. We do this by interviewing Alma, talking with city staff. We also do walkthroughs of the city's internal controls. So we're concerned with two things. Are they effectively designed? And are they actually placed into service? Okay? So we're not providing an opinion as to the city's effectiveness of internal controls, but we are using that to flesh out where the risks may be for misstatement. Okay, so once we've obtained an understanding of the city's fiscal operations, we would then assess the risks of misstatement, whether due to error or due to fraud. And then we develop our audit procedures to obtain evidence about financial statement balances and transactions. I did leave out the part where we actually do all the work, which is performing those procedures and then reporting in terms of whether or not the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Okay, so this year specifically, we focused on a few different areas. Some of these areas are probably familiar to you, but they are just so significant that we're always going to look at them. This included the city's cash and investment portfolio, revenues and receivables, so gas tax collections, utility billings, areas like that. Of course, we're interested in the city's expenses, including salaries and accounts payable. We also took a look at some of the significant activity related to capital assets. So vehicles, are they being placed into service properly? Are they being removed when they're actually taken out of service? Also, this year, we looked at the net pension liability. This is the actuarial determined liability related to retiring and retired employees. Okay, so pretty significant liability there. And new this year is the subscription-based information technology arrangements. So we focused on this. It's actually a new pronouncement that requires the city to report as an asset certain agreements with software providers, if they're significant.
A question about that. How do you determine whether or not it's significant? Is that a, is that a number, or is that a usage?
Generally speaking, so similar to the city's capital assets, there's like a threshold that the city would implement, saying if it's above a certain dollar amount, we will report it as a capital asset. Same thing here with the software. So the city kind of has a policy for that. And so we would consider that policy, as well as just the overall materiality thresholds.
Do you know what that number was?
For capital assets, 5,000?
I think it's 5,000. Yeah, 5,000. Okay, so that's kind of the audit process and what we focused on. Now I'm going to jump into auditors' reports. Were there any questions before I touch on those? Okay. So, as Alma mentioned, we did issue an unmodified opinion over the financial statements. So this indicates that the audit was performed in accordance with applicable standards and that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. It also tells the users that the significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. The estimates included are reasonable and free from significant bias, and the disclosures are complete and properly reflected in the financials. Okay, so good news there. The next report that we issue is the Government Audit Standards Report. This actually doesn't include an opinion, but it describes our responsibility for internal controls as it relates to the, to the audit. So again, we don't provide an opinion on the city's internal controls, but if we happen to identify weaknesses in those processes, we will report them here. So we did identify two weaknesses in the city's internal control processes, and the first was related to the adjustments that were required during our audit to ensure GAAP presentation of the financial statements. So more detail can be found on page nine of the single audit report for that. And then on page 10, we also identified another deficiency related to the city's cash and bank reconciliation process. Okay, so that's kind of a carryforward finding from the previous year, and more information can be found on page 10. Related to compliance, we did not identify any deficiencies in our audit. Okay, the last report that we issued as a result of our audit was the Uniform Guidance Report, and this tells users whether or not the city maintained material compliance with the federal expenditures. So we noted about $1.4 million of federal expenditures during the year, and I'm pleased to report that we did issue an unmodified opinion over the city's compliance. There were no deficiencies in internal control over compliance identified, and the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in relation to the financial statements. So kind of a lot there. Any questions on that? And last, I'm going to finish up with what we call required communications. I believe this was included in, in the packet to council, but this kind of summarizes some of the more significant aspects of the audit. So the significant accounting policies that were implemented or changed during the year include the subscription-based information technology arrangements. The significant estimates included in the financials include the allowance for doubtful accounts, as well as the net pension liability. There's a lot of different estimates included in those numbers, and so audit standards require that we point these out so that you're aware of the areas that are more susceptible to bias. Any sensitive disclosures in the financial statements? We identified the deficit fund balance, which indicates which funds are underwater as of year end, and that's in note two. We did not encounter any difficulties in performing our audit. The significant audit adjustments that we posted are in a report attached to the audit communication letter. There were no significant disagreements with management, and we are not aware of any fraud or illegal acts. So with that, that completes my presentation of the audit. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. So first, is there any questions from council?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, Stacy, you're first.
Quick question on the internal control deficiencies you found. So you've only identified the two in the whole audit? That was it?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with management's response on identifying those?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we actually don't provide an opinion as to management's response to those findings, but those are something that we do follow up on in subsequent audits to see if those findings have been remedied. So there was nothing in the, in the response that we saw that was unusual.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, my question was along the same lines, page nine and 10. Did you give any recommendations to us on that?
Yes, I believe so.
You did, okay.
Yes, and they'll be included in that, in that finding. So if you go to the very bottom, it should have a recommendation. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Anthony.
So it's the exact same thing. On that, I see that your recommendation was to review it, and management's response was a corrective action plan. So I guess my question is not as much for you, but more for staff. Given the corrective action plan that you're proposing, is there anything that you guys see as a reason that can't be corrected in the future?
No, and we are in the process of implementing a service to help us with one of the findings with our current software to balance the journey. And we're implementing it as soon as possible within a few weeks, hopefully. And I would say I'm in tune with the other findings. We have a process in place that we are implementing already for the new audit. I mean, this year, it should be implemented and effective.
Yeah, I think these audits are very important. I know we're all, all three of us are kind of hitting on this one thing. I do want to point out that there was a lot audited here, and I think these findings do seem that we can improve, for sure, but these findings are very minimal, given the scope of the audit. So I do want to praise staff for the good job that they're doing. And with these items that were found that were, that we were deficient in, if there's something you guys need that we can help as council in the future, please let us know.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Do we have any other council discussions?
No.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? No? Okay, if there are none, we can bring it back to council. Do the recommended actions to accept this audit?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, move on to item 6.2, the Senior Center Kitchen Remodel Award. Staff report by City Engineer Dave Peters, presented by City Engineer Dave Peters. Welcome, Dave.
Hey, Mayor, members of council. So we, we completed the design for the remodel of the Senior Center Kitchen. Put out the bid, had a bid opening on March 5th, received no bids. I think I reported that to you in the past. Public contract code then allows us to negotiate with a single local contractor for the work, which we've done with Deft Development. That's owned by CJ Brock. He's given us a quote for the work that's pretty close to, to our budget, so I'm bringing it before you tonight for, to award that contract. With his costs and, and our design and, and construction inspection that we anticipate during the, the project, total costs are anticipated to be approximately $242,000, and we have a healthcare district grant of 220. So we've already met with, with Mr. Brock, and there are some ways that he thinks maybe during construction, we can, we can trim some of those costs down. So we're going to, we're going to try to do that during construction. But if we aren't able to do that, there are sufficient city funds to make up the difference. So with that, I could answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from council?
What is the work, what is the timetable for the work?
It's a couple of months to do the work contingent upon getting equipment, and Mr. Brock's already actually ordered the equipment in, in advance of tonight's action. So he's, he's being very, very proactive.
He knows us well.
Mr. Peters, I noticed on like the itemized description of the work.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no stove on there. Is that, has that been addressed?
That's, that's included under item 11, equipment.
Okay.
Yeah, that's essentially the, the new range.
Okay, perfect. Did you have anything?
Will they have to close the senior standard during construction?
They, they actually have already constructed like a temporary working kitchen in, in another room, and so that's, that's already in place. So they, they've already moved out and are gearing up to use that to do their food service while the regular kitchen's being remodeled, so.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this? Okay, bring it back. Is there any other council discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. The recommendation is to award the Senior Center Kitchen model to Deft Development for the amount of $206,785,000.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
And just going to go ahead and stay up here.
Have a nice one.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 6.3, the 2024 Citywide Park Improvement Award. Staff report by City Engineer Dave Peters, presented by Dave Peters.
Thanks again. So we've developed a project that, that would construct improvements at multiple city parks. Project was essentially separated into three bid schedules. Bid Schedule A would construct the new prefabricated restroom at Memorial Park and make some modifications to the asphalt shade structure to resolve some, some maintenance issues we've had with that. That's in our bid Schedule A, and, and those improvements would be funded by our development impact fee, park funds. Schedule B was, or is, to place poured-in-place rubber in place of the play structure areas at Memorial Park and Downtown Park. So essentially, take all the, the wood chips out and put the, the rubberized surfacing in. And that's Schedule B, and that's, that would be paid for by the tri-county, by a tri-county healthcare grant. And then bid Schedule C is work at Heritage Park, which is also to place poured-in-place rubber in the playground area where the wood chips are, and also to install a new shade structure over the play equipment. So we opened bids on this project last week, I'm sorry, and that, that last schedule would be paid for by a Clean California grant. So the, the work separated out by funding source and the three schedules. So last week, we, we opened bids on the project. We only received one bid from Todd Companies. They have done work in, in Kingsburg before. And in evaluating the, the bids, the, the work contained within bid Schedule A and bid Schedule C fell within, pretty close to within what we were expecting. You can see, like in, in Schedule A, it's 100, almost $160,000 for the, for the work at Memorial Park, for the Memorial Park restroom and the asphalt shade structure. And then the work at Heritage Park came in at 241, and our, our grant is 225. So those came in relatively close. The one, the bid schedule related to the poured-in-place rubber at Memorial Park and, and Downtown Park came in a lot higher than what we had anticipated. I think a lot of it has to do with just the, the cumbersome working area and those small areas, especially in Downtown Park. At least, that's the feedback we're getting from the contractor. Poured-in-place rubber came in almost double what we had anticipated based on previous projects. And then we were also hoping to just do the rubber within the, the area recommended by the manufacturer for the various play equipment, but that kind of became impractical because of the areas. And so the, the area of the poured-in-place rubber was actually a little bit more than what we had originally anticipated. So all those, all those things have contributed to put that project pretty, pretty substantially over budget. So because bid Schedule C is so, so much more than what we had anticipated, we're recommending tonight that you only award Schedules A and C for the work so that we can complete the work at Heritage Park and comply with the timelines in the, in the, in the grant, and also complete the work associated with the new restroom, which has already been ordered by the city and is, is, is in the, is in the works. And then for bid Schedule C, we're going to, we're looking at ways to try to either minimize the area of the poured-in-place rubber or come up with a new scheme to complete that work. I've talked with the Public Works Director that we might be able to get it, get it done with a mixture of the poured-in-place rubber and maybe some, some synthetic turf in lieu of doing the whole thing in poured-in-place rubber. So we're looking at ways to try to trim the cost down, and then we'll, we'll circle back with the healthcare district on the grant once we have a, a, a plan and a proposal to try to move that, that, that work forward.
Okay, questions from council?
I have one. Mr. Peters, is, is there, Vince and I met an individual at a function that was saying that now there's parts that are doing different material than poured-in-play. And I can't remember what that material was, but it supposedly lasts longer. I'm not sure if it's less expensive or more expensive, but have you heard of other materials besides poured-in-play, poured, excuse me, the poured-in-play? I mean, is there something that could be better or cheaper?
Yeah, we can look into that. I'm, I'm not familiar with what you might be referring to. I mean, there are, so, so essentially, all of these play equipments come with a, a rating for, for how much fall impact you need to have. And so, you know, obviously, the smaller, you know, like kindergarten-type stuff, you need to have way less because they're, they're lower, the kids are littler, and then, you know, as, as the play equipment gets bigger with bigger kids, it needs to be, it needs to have more, more protection. So the depth and everything is affected by that. But yeah, there's, there's approved, and you could do it with sand, and you could do it with wood chips, which is what we've done in the past. You can do it with poured-in-place rubber. There might be other things out there. But we're, we're looking at, you know, any, any way we can, you know, to try to, to try to complete that work. The, the issue with the chips is it's, they're just a really big maintenance issue. And so we're trying to get away from that. But yeah, just, you know, taking the chips out and putting base rock down on like, and like, you know, synthetic turf, that might be like the cheapest way to do it, but it wouldn't meet the fall protection criteria that you're required to have with those play, play equipment.
I think what I'd like to do is give you her contact, and maybe you could reach out to her and just say, you know, try to find out some more about it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Is it, is it Lori, Alvin?
Lori, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know her. I've already met with her actually recently.
Oh, did she? Okay, good.
Yeah, and she, what she was talking about was the poured-in-play stuff. Now I could reach back out to her and see if she's got something different. Yeah.
I have a question about the shade structure.
Yeah.
At asphalt, so there's one there now.
Yes.
And I know it's kind of low.
Right, this, this raises it up.
This can, that's.
Yep, yes, sir.
That's what it's going to be.
This resolves that issue, yeah.
Because I know they could, those teenagers can stand on the top of the slide.
Yeah, we're not, it keeps getting ripped, and we're, we're not sure if it's just, we're not sure why it's getting torn, but we're hoping, hoping, hoping the cameras might tell us what happened, but I don't think we've been able to get anything conclusive, so, but this will resolve.
So that's the construction for that, yeah, just to raise it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So item number B, are we going to go put that one back out to bid at some point in the future? Or I mean, is the grant going to expire and we're going?
Yeah, at this point, I mean, we're trying to figure out an, an action plan for that. I mean, one option would be to give the grant money back and say, hey, just, costs are just a lot more than we anticipated. Possibly, we could just do one of the two locations. You know, we might be able to come up with a, with a new design approach that, you know, allows us to do both of the locations with some additional city funding to supplement the grant amount. We're looking at all of those things right now. I just don't know that we have a, a clearer path forward at this point. We haven't given up on it yet, though.
Thank you.
So your recommendation is to move forward with bid Schedule A and bid Schedule C, correct?
Correct.
And how, I know you said that you're looking at an action plan for B. What would be a timeline before we would see a staff recommendation for that?
A couple of weeks, I think.
By the next council meeting, potentially?
Yeah, I think we could do that. I mean, I, I don't know if that would give us time to.
We've just committed to you.
I mean, I'm talking about from, from my standpoint, but I don't know if like, reach, if we would have time to reach out to them. I mean, I'm talking about from, from my standpoint, but I don't know if like reach, if we would have time to reach out to the healthcare district.
Yeah, I think the challenge is potentially the grant itself because I don't know. I think we felt confident that if we awarded tonight, if we had had a successful bid schedule, that we would be able to complete the project within the fiscal year. And I don't think that that's probably going to be likely now. And so regardless of what our potential path forward is, we'd have to go to the healthcare district and either ask them to extend that timeline because they have, you know, their agreements are, specify a, a certain timeframe. And I, I don't know how they're, how receptive they're going to be, just given the, you know, I don't necessarily want to ask them for more money if I'm being candid. So, you know, we'd have to evaluate, you know, even if we got, you know, a more favorable bid, what, what the delta would be for our budget and whether or not that's, you know, as feasible as once considered. And, you know, as Dave mentioned, I think just the, the cost of the material was double from, you know, a more recent project that we did. So that would be a challenge unto itself.
If we were to choose either Memorial or Downtown Park, even with this current bid, is that something if, if we had, if one of those parks was designated as this, we're going to move forward with this park, would we be able to make that within budget and would we be able to make that within timeline?
No, I don't think we could complete even, even one of those with the budget.
And that's not what the grant agreement with the healthcare district identifies. So they, they would have to be willing to alter that as well, otherwise we would, you know, not be, not be meeting our commitment there. We haven't, you know, when you say give back, I mean, it's, it's a reimbursable grant, so we haven't received any money from them. It's just a matter of, you know, whether they would consider continuing it.
Okay, sounds like we're gonna have to have conversation. I mean, they're great. They've given us a lot of money. We're thankful for that. Maybe we just need to make some adjustments. So because these are going out to bid, can you explain just real, in the most brief version possible? Because this is the second item that we've had with either no bids or limited bids on that. Can you explain how these people can find these bids, just so people know transparent wise, how, how these go out to bid?
Yeah, so they, they get advertised in, in the local builders exchange. Sometimes they're on the funding. They also get advertised in the paper. They get posted on our website. And so I don't think it's a lack of contractors knowing about the projects. I think it's just a lack of having the ability to take on more work and, and do the work.
That's the big point that I wanted to make is that if we're doing our part to get it out there to try to get as many bids, this is touching hundreds of businesses that could do it. It's just a matter of whether or not they're interested in it.
Yeah, on the builders exchange, contractors throughout the state are made aware of it, so. I mean, we usually get contractors within the valley, but, you know, somebody in Sacramento could come hit on it. They would know, they would know about it.
I don't have anything else. Do we have any public comment on this? Come on up. We're gonna make you come up and say your name again.
My driver's license is always linked to Kingsburg regardless of where I slept. Anyway, my question's about the wood chips being removed from the current playgrounds at whatever parks. What happens to the wood chips that you remove?
So real quick, just because, just so people can hear it.
Oh.
I'm just saying, I'm just gonna repeat, your, your question was about the wood chips.
Wood chips that are currently in, of I believe he said, the play areas of the various parks to be replaced by something with rubber. What happens to those wood chips that are removed?
Okay.
The contractor just disposes of them.
Just, disposes of them like waste?
He may use them on another project. He may dispose them of them a different way. It's just, it's, it's.
Okay, so potentially it could be waste instead of recycled somewhere. And I'm not a tree hugger. I just trying to contain costs on something, you know? It's that Snoll Svensk thing, that tight wad sweep.
Okay, so anything else for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just, you know, for the councils and for the public certification. So those wood chips are not just the, any old wood chips either. They're actually engineered wood chips because of the fall protection that are required. And so that's, they're expensive. So we have to replace them every so often at the parks that do have them. Costs several thousand dollars to do that at each location, which is one of the reasons why we, you know, would like to transition to the, to the poured-in-place rubber because it's also a maintenance issue and then also, you know, it does provide, poured-in-place does provide a little bit more accessibility, you know, to kids that might have, you know, disabilities or certain things that, you know, the, that the wood chips may not offer outside of, you know, parents complaining about wood chips and shoes as well. So we have in the past, when we have replaced the wood chips, because we have to do it every so often, we have used them in some of our, like, public spaces that we could potentially use them at. But, you know, as Dave mentioned, if it was a contractor doing the work, it might be, might be different. So just some additional info.
Is there any other council discussion on this? If not, this is an action item. It is, the recommendation from staff is to award the projects to JT two, JT two and Todd Companies in the amount of four hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents. Entertain motions for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Item six point four is the adoption of the City of Kingsburg twenty twenty-four emergency operation plan. Staff report by Fire Chief Banowski, presentation by Fire Chief Banowski. Welcome.
I'm it. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'll make this as enlightening as possible and what we're here to do tonight. So this evening is, is we're gonna present real quick the reasons behind and why we have to have an emergency operation plan and a continuation of operation plan and then how we went about the process and where we go. So I'll try to make it as painless as possible, but you can see the large documents and where they are and what they are. I wanted to point, I thought it would be cooler. There's only, you know, and one there. All right, so what requires it? So first it was done after September eleventh and it was highlighted by Presidential Directive Number Eight. And it happened really after Katrina in New Orleans. And I was fortunate that I was on the federal incident management team at the time. We, the only time I've ever flown on a private jet out of the Bay Area to Baton Rouge. And what you really saw was absolutely no one who knew what in the world was going on in the emergency planning and emergency operation world. And that's what we were there to highlight and fix, and that's what brought Presidential Directive around. From the aspect of why people from California were there, California is disaster central no matter where you are. We've got floods, we've got earthquakes, we've got wildland fires. We have been able to handle emergency management and law enforcement and fire and public works for fifty, sixty, seventy years. So it's ingrained in where we are. So they took our model of ICS, they took our model of what we did, and that's what started the entire process. And then it got elaborated into Presidential Directive Number Eight. That then goes to the California Office of Emergency Services, which then had a choice to decide how to mandate emergency operations centers and emergency operation plans. This might be an area for disagreement per se, but the governor and them at the time they did it decided to put that responsibility on local governments. Probably for cost and benefit ratios, if you look at other states, they did it by counties or parishes. A little bit larger, instead of having them in all those jurisdictions, they did it more of a larger umbrella to do it than what California chose. California chose all jurisdictions of local government authority have to have an emergency operation plan. And then they even pushed that now down into schools. But it's really an overarching goal to figure out how to coordinate your resources, how to work with people, what needs to be done and develop a plan for each of the sections under the incident command system. And then it's really how you work with your local and state and federal partners. So we have our emergency operation plan. It was updated by an outside professional who came in, evaluated what we did, updated the plan to make sure it's in compliance to the twenty twenty-three standards from the federal government and the OES, the Office of Emergency Services, and then basically built it that identified all the churches, schools, and basically the buildings and things within the city of Kingsburg, what those risks were and how they were. The last update was in two thousand and seven, so that's why we needed to get it realigned. And then we basically had to work towards making ourselves have a framework for and a training to make sure we're compliant to the emergency operation plan. All of this took place prior to my arrival, so in twenty twenty-three, they came out. They had a exercise with the new emergency operation plan, showed everybody how it works, where it went. And that's what AP Triton did per the bid award. And that's how they were selected, what they did. They identified the primary, secondary locations of the emergency operation plan. They looked at the areas within the community. They had their tabletop exercise in twenty twenty-three. And the last portion that's required is in twenty twenty-four while we're here is legally it has to be adopted by the jurisdiction having authority. So that's what the resolution is for, for us to adopt the, officially adopt the emergency operation plan. And then what really needs to occur is, is there are some recommendations, two or three of them we've already completed. Some of them are at the county level, so the county is currently updating their emergency operation plan, their hazard mitigation plan. They're updating to web EOC upgrades that Terry from the county is doing. So part of that will trickle down to the local government aspects since they had a change, I don't know, maybe a year and a half ago in the emergency management of the county. And we're seeing updates and improvements there. We went, participated and put our pieces back to them the first week or two I was here to make sure our plan was consistent with theirs, give our input to theirs. So in turn, that makes us eligible, God forbid if we have anything, that we in turn can receive state and federal funding. And then obviously what we need to do is every year, one of the recommendations is to make sure we look at it, make sure it's updated, make sure our municipal code section is updated for emergency operations. And then every other year, run some sort of a training tabletop exercise. And that's pretty much the presentation unless you would like me to go into any questions or other pieces. I'll bring Alex up synthetically by the book. He is actually the emergency manager, so. And I'll take a ride back. But realistically, what you have to assume for an EOC and the, and emergency plan for the City of Kingsburg is, is that it's gotta be something very small localized, like a flooding in a specific area, something like that. Anything bigger, the public safety resources, public works, resources are really all gonna be operational to solve and work on that problem. So it's going to have to go to the county or someone bigger to work that coordination just because look at the number of employees we have, the number of employees we have really have to be operational to come to work. So really just more have like an operational EOC to help kind of bring the pieces together. But kind of the, you need the county. And if you can look at like the Paradise Fire, a small community, they start a little EOC that day, but at the end of the day, the state came in, emergency management people came in to run the emergency operation, and they did that for two weeks during that fire. So there is bigger resources you go higher up through the state and the feds. That's it for my presentation. I'm available for comments, questions, or concerns?
Questions from council? Total cost, I, I asked that. This is a big, it's a big document. I know that we had to source it out. Do you have any idea?
Seventy-two thousand, I believe.
That's how much we paid to Triton?
Yes.
Does not include any staff hours or anything?
That does not include the staff hours, the staff hours for training or anything like that. And I'm trying to confirm that right now, but I believe I looked at that earlier this morning.
And I know it's, it's of course another state mandate that they let us pay for. Appreciate that.
Yes.
But it's important. It's an important document as, as mundane and five hundred pages long as it is. Having been on the other end of this, it matters when you go back to try to seek money. And I, I know we'll probably turn over a lot of our disasters, but I, this, this document.
You have to. I mean, that's what it is in order to get a dollar of reimbursement, and that's what it comes down to. And that's what the county and the state look like to make sure we have it, so we have to check the box. Let me correct myself. It was sixty-four thousand, eight fifty-two. But then obviously we had the staff time for the tabletop exercise, the staff time for the chief. We had to then, while they were on site, work with them to show the locations for shelters and other pieces of that. Because they built all of that in that plan of where it could be places with kitchens to use in case we had to shelter people from a train derailment or anything along those lines. So there's a lot of extra piece that's in the COO plan that talks really about the businesses, the nonprofits and churches and things along those lines that we could use resources that they have.
And I, I know this is a conversation that the city managers had with me with some elected officials is recognizing our potentials for disaster in this area and trying to get state and federal funding. That's one of our big pushes for even an EOC, even a hot EOC potentially here in town. Simply because of our location, we're right in, right in the middle of three counties. If it's a regional disaster, we're a good isolated location. So, you know, God willing, one day those fundings will come in to maybe give us a little bit of a head start on that. I know it's, it's a big ask, but geographically it makes sense for the region, so hopefully we'll move forward with that.
Poorville got some, so you just never know where the money goes and some of those pieces of the money that goes, so.
But I, I appreciate it. I know this document is tough to read, but it's important. So thank you. Thank you for kind of pushing us over the finish line.
No problem. It's what we needed and that's what we're here for. And we'll get them distributed to, just so you're aware of the PD departments, the primary EOC, and then the training room at Station Two is the secondary EOC for the city. That's where the documents will go. That's where the maps, all the forms and everything we put into the appropriate place there, and that's where it'll go.
Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, move on. Is there any other council discussion? If not, we can entertain a motion for this.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, that's to adopt the revised EOC. All in favor?
I think we have to do a resolution, Resolution twenty-four oh-three.
Yeah, you're right. Adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, which is approving the revised emergency operation plan. So same motions?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, council reports and staff communications. Seven point one, Community Services Commission.
We haven't met since our last meeting.
Seven point two, Public Safety Committee.
I believe we meet this month.
Seven point three, Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, we do, Laura.
Laura.
Yeah, and they, they meet, no, they meet next week.
Seven point four, Economic Development.
We have not met.
Seven point five, Finance.
We haven't met.
Seven point six, Planning Commission.
Have not met since our last meeting.
Seven point seven, SKGSA.
We have a meeting on May eighth.
Seven point eight, Downtown Bid. Have not met. Seven point nine, Council of Governments. We did meet, nothing to report. It was from Kingsburg. Seven ten, Councilmember Reports.
Well, I'll give an update. The, the Weekend of Wellness was last Saturday and it was a very nice and successful event. It was a beautiful day. My husband ran the pickleball tournament. They had about twenty-five teams out there. They had a great time. Carly received about two hundred filled-in surveys. The surveys was what she was looking for as the data to gather for her presentation back to the, to Stanford on the program. But I would say, I would say there was probably a thousand people that came in and out of that park. I mean, it was a good, there was a good turnout. It was, it was a nice, you know, a lot of good booths, a lot of good workshops. It just seemed like a good constant flow of people throughout the day. It was, it was, it was nice. I look forward to the next one.
Yeah, I, I had one to report. I thought, I wanted to give a thank you to the chamber that the car show was a great event, a lot of people down there. I was there, I think all of us went to the car show. I know Stacy was working the registration table. A lot of people showed up day of, so really good event. And so just wanted to give Chamber a little thank you and a nod for that. Put, put together a good event.
I don't have much. I was down Riverside last Wednesday. Let the council know that it was for my daughter's graduation. My oldest daughter Andrea got her Masters of Social Work and Counseling. So, and then today I went to the chairman's barbecue at SKF. Got to hang out with Buddy and all the staff at SKF and the employees and they had some good tri-tip over there, so that's all I have.
For me, just car show and cruise night. Chamber did a great job at that. Stacy worked, worked hard on that. So I, I don't know if people understand exactly how much. I'm, I don't know if people understand exactly how much effort Councilmember Smith puts into Chamber events, but she works hard, so we're, we're sure of that. I believe they had more cars registered this year than ever before, three sixty, is that correct?
Yeah, yes, and they received almost a hundred day of.
So that's great, I, I think it's pretty clear when you go to these events, Kingsburg's becoming more and more popular. And I think that's a result of the effort from Chamber, the bid and staff and everybody to really change downtown to what it is. So it's, it's a great thing, I, I know I'm real thankful for it, so thank you Stacy for that. Any other councilman reports?
Yeah, I will make mention, we went, uh, my mom and I stopped by Loving Seed today. So they, they opened the other day and Viking Bar and Grill, um, on the corner of Marion and, okay, across from Washington School. They're having their, they're, they're open today, regular hours start today. Yes, so, um, I think that was it. So it was neat to see a couple more restaurants popping up in town.
Uh, item seven eleven, the city manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, just a couple of quick items. Uh, Finance Committee meets, uh, next Tuesday, we'll, we'll go over a few, uh, budget items there. A Planning Commission meets next Thursday evening, um, they're gonna be talking about the housing element and then also consider allocations for, uh, a new senior, uh, housing complex. Both of those items will also, uh, if moving on, will come to the city council at a future date. Uh, a couple other updates, uh, the Sierra Street, the, uh, RFB project is completed, and so we've got a couple of nice, uh, comments on that. Uh, the Draper Street work that was planned, the, the waterline project, uh, will begin, uh, after Swedish Festival, Swedish Festival. Uh, and then, uh, hopefully that waterline work will be done, uh, this fiscal year. And then, uh, the road, uh, improvement project, so the repaving of Draper will occur in July. So, uh, we'll be sure to communicate, um, with everyone there. And then you also approved this evening the twenty twenty-four Streets Project, so that's, uh, fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth north of Stroud. Uh, so there's some waterline improvements with that, um, to improve, uh, fire flows, add some hydrants, and then, uh, those roads will all be reconstructed as well, so that'll be occurring in, um, July, August timeframe. So, uh, that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. Okay, well, item eight, future agenda, future agenda items we have listed as none. And so we will move to item nine, which is adjourn the city council meeting.